Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors reorganizational meeting. Great to see a full house. And we're going to get started with our invocation by Deacon Pete Riza of St. Bernard's Catholic Church in Tracy. If you all please stand if you wish.
Loving Father, we thank you for this time of unity during this meeting. We thank you for the building of relationships and friendships of those who are positioned to work together for the success of the Board of Supervisors. Please watch over and guide those who will be sworn in today. Thank you for the ideas that will be spoken and for those who willingly contribute their thoughts and ideas. Inspire them to enact policies that are for the good of all the citizens of San Joaquin County. So, Father, fan into flames the gifts which are in us that reveal your truth to each to us each day. Yours is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Deacon. If you all could stay standing for me for the Pledge of Allegiance, Supervisor Patty, would you do that for us, please?
Please join us as we salute the greatest flag on planet Earth.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can all remain, oh, please, seated. Thank you, Supervisor Patty. Move to item number four, roll call. Good roll call, please.
Supervisor Canepa.
Here.
Supervisor Patty.
Present.
Sorry.
I spooned too.
We'll get, we'll get used to this new layout. Supervisor Viapudwa.
Present.
Supervisor Patty.
Present.
Supervisor Dean.
Here.
And Vice Chair Rickman.
Here. All right, move on to item number five, what you all here have been waiting for. We're going to announce the oath of office, and they'll be administered in the following order. Supervisor Canepa, District 2, by the Honorable Kevin Lincoln, Mayor, City of Stockton. Supervisor Dean of District 4, by the Honorable Richard M. Pombo, former United States Representative of California's 11th District. Assessor Recorder County Clerk Steve Bestelarides, and by his wife, Doreen Bestelarides. Auditor Controller Jeffrey Woltcamp, by the Honorable Adrian Van Hooten, former San Joaquin County Auditor Controller. And our Treasurer, Tax Collector Fonse Calcom, by Clerk of the Board Rochelle de Board. And when we go to item six, wearing in of Supervisors, I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle, our Clerk of the Board.
Vice Chair, we now ask Supervisor Paul Canepa and Honorable Kevin Lincoln to proceed to the front of the dais to administer the oath of office.
What side do you want to be on?
My right side.
Okay, all right, yeah. You have to check in. He's high maintenance.
So Tom, yeah, Tom moved the microphone back so it's not in the picture, so we have to stand forward, so we don't, we don't.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty.
Thank you for doing this, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm extremely proud of you. You can put your hand down just for a moment.
He's going to make me get sad. I get a little emotional, so just bear with us.
I just want everybody to know that I've had the privilege and honor to serve alongside you at the City of Stockton for the last two years. And where I've had the privilege of serving alongside you for the last two years, the city has had the privilege of your leadership for a total of eight years. And you've navigated the City of Stockton through some very challenging times, difficult times. And as a result of that, our city today is stronger than ever. So I want to thank you for your leadership to the City of Stockton, and I'm really excited about your leadership here at the county as District 2 Supervisor. And I got to tell you, Paul, or Supervisor Canepa, that, that placard right there looks really good. Yeah, so I'm really excited. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Paul Canepa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and.
Allegiance.
Allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California and the State of the United States of America.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Supervisor Canepa.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
I'd like to invite Register of Voters Olivia Hale to present Supervisor Canepa with his certificate of election.
First off, I want to thank Mayor Kevin Lincoln for swearing me in. It's truly an honor and a privilege to hold this position. It's, it's amazing how we go through life. It's kind of, I equate it to like a book. And so I've had a lot of chapters in my life, obviously. I was born and raised by my parents marrying and Raymond Canepa, and went through elementary school at Eldorado, enunciation, went to St. Mary's High School, and went to St. Mary's College along with Delta. And then I married my wife, and we've been together for 31 years. We've been together for 38 years, Leslie. So thank you. And my daughter Jillian is here, and her boyfriend, and my brother David and his wife Darlene, my sister Renee and her husband Randy. Thank you for coming and thank you for putting up with me and, and letting me do the stuff that I do. So that was one of the chapters. So obviously, being raised the son of a car washer, and my mom and dad are probably looking down pretty proudly now. So excuse me if I get a little emotional, but that's how I lead. I lead with my heart on my chest. So all these chapters of life, obviously, I, I have different families and different chapters in the book. I, I was on the Lincoln Unified School Board, so education is a huge passion of mine. I still serve on Stockton Collegiate's Board. So I have a house full of teachers. My wife is a teacher, my daughter Jillian, who's here as a teacher, and my, my daughter Chelsea, who couldn't be here, she's in Scotts Valley teaching first grade. She couldn't be here today because they just started back. So all these different chapters, the Lincoln Unified School Board, the folks, the people, the passion that I've learned from that and about kids and how they're our future is important to me. And so that was another one of my chapters. Then I decided to throw my hat in and run for the Stockton City Council. And that was crazy because we went through bankruptcy. So during that chapter, I've learned a lot, learned a lot about government, learned about a lot about what not to do. And so that chapter of my life was not easy, and it, it, it got Stockton a lot of years to get there. And so there was a lot of meetings, a lot of time and a lot of energy, but I learned a lot. And I learned that I had another family. So I have my, my, my life, friends and family, Lincoln Unified, City of Stockton. And then obviously, too, I've been, and that's going to be the hardest transition, I've washed cars my whole life, so I'm pretty proud of that because I'm in the public service business. And this job just equates to that, that, you know what I mean? We're here to be public servants, and which I'm very proud and very honored to be part of. Then if it's not crazy enough, my crazy brother-in-law had the idea to open up a carniceria, so now we're the proud owners of a carniceria. So now we have a whole nother family, family and friends as employees for Micosina. So as I start this chapter, you all are part of my book. Hopefully someday it'll be on a top 10 bestseller list somewhere, but that's, that's kind of high hopes. But I, I appreciate, everybody's here from the City Manager Black, Florence Lowe I see in the back. Thank you for helping me be the person that I am, the person that I become. I'm very proud and honored to have this position. Thank you for all the friends and family in the audience. People, like you said, campaigns aren't easy. I won't go into specifics. Everybody who's helped me raise money and have been there for me, I appreciate it. There's a list of folks, and there's a lot of you, but you all know that you're near and dear to my heart because without you, I wouldn't be sitting in this seat. So thanks to all the, the folks and labor that have helped me get here. I appreciate your help. It's been a long time coming. My book, this new chapter is starting today. I hope to make you proud, and I hope to do a good job, and I look forward to serving as your county supervisor in District 2. So thank you very much.
We now ask Supervisor Stephen J. Ding of the 4th District and Honorable Richard Pombo to proceed to the front of the dais to administer the oath of office.
Before we start, 30 years ago this week, I was sworn in to my first term in United States Congress, and you were there. You ready?
I'm ready.
I state your name.
I, Steve Ding.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign or domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign or domestic.
That I will bear, bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Glad you're here.
I'd like to invite Register Hale to present Supervisor Ding with his certificate of election.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to make a few introductions first. And Mr. Chairman, Richard Pombo's wife, Annette Pombo is here as well. Thank you, Annette. Mama Ding, thank you. I'm a lot like Paul, very passionate, very emotional. Like to introduce the rest of my family. We'll start with Matty Ding and my grandson Marlo and his father Michael in the back. Where's Marlo? There he is. My son Stephen Ding Jr., so if anything goes wrong. And Connor Ding, my defensive back in the room. They've been running the Woodbridge Crossing since this campaign. I mean, one, you know, good thing that came out of COVID, they, they both came home, and it was just in the nick of time. And life has evolved, and they will be there to take care of your every need. So give them a call. I've got, besides Richard Pombo, I have another previous boss in the room, Doug Willhite, former supervisor. Thank you, Doug. That's now Supervisor Pinhead to you. So let me tell you what's changed since I served Richard in Congress. This is the first time I've had a tie-on since I left the House floor. When I went to go get a cup of coffee, we didn't have things called Keurig. You know, there was just a pot of coffee, you know, on the stove. But things, some things have never changed. 2006, the Raiders were 4-14 back then, too. So, you know. One of the things I'm excited about this board is the people I'm serving with. I've known Tom, you know, the longest, Stag State, '81. I'm serving with, with two members who have been here six years, and I'm looking forward to their, their guidance on, on how this institution works. I've had a few conversations with Chairman Rickman. I love the name of that sound. I have faith in, in your public service, in the direction you're going, and I'm looking forward to it. And then with Paul, you've got two very passionate guys that come from private industry. We both wash glass. You know, he washes car glass, I wash, you know, dish glasses. So, but we're, we're in the business of public service, we're in the business of hospitality. And at the end of the day, what matters is, you know, when that, that, that lady picks up the phone and she calls the county, and, and we pick up that phone, it really doesn't matter what her concern is. You know, it could be a lost dog, it could be she can't find her way to Safeway. You're lucky that she found your phone number. So we, you know, we're there to help, and we have to remember that at all times. That, that's our number one rule, is making sure people are safe and protected. I'm, I'm looking forward to the decorum of this board. I'm looking forward to the respect that this board is going to show its staff. You know, an institution is only as strong as its staff, and we've got some amazing, amazing people around here. In 1997, when the levees broke, you know, and in the timing, this was about the same week, if I remember correctly, Congressman. You know, New Year's Eve and everything started, and that's, that's when your medal gets tested is, and I, I see, you know, over the next couple of weeks, we're gonna, we're gonna have some challenges, and I think we're gonna be, you know, ready to go. And I know this board definitely, definitely is. I want to thank some of the other individuals, who I've got contributors, supporters, you know, Gina Calder was there right from the very beginning, Karen Chandler, thank you very much, Bob Gutierrez is back there as well after they all said, you're gonna do what? Actually, I got one more story. So I'm sitting out of town, and I get this stupid idea to run for Supervisor, and I called Congressman Pombo, and I said, I want you to talk me out of something. And he, he heard some of the things that, that I was concerned about and said, no, this is absolutely what you need to do. So I appreciate your encouragement. Final note, for those of you who know me, know I love to tell stories, so I'll keep this one real short, I swear, because usually they're 20-minute stories. And, and I think the Congressman probably remembers this story. I used to be very heavily involved in partisan politics, which is why I'm loving this position because I don't, you know, it's Valley first. But we were engaged in some political campaigns around the state, and I got back to Washington, and I got in the elevator, and then former Congressman Bob Matsui, who was the, the dean of the delegation, got in the elevator, and we were going up to the office, and the Congressman looks at me and says, Steve, I want you to stay on the elevator for a second. And I'm thinking, all my pride and glory, he knows who I am. And I'm thinking, this is great. And everybody got off the elevator, and the Congressman looked straight ahead, didn't look at me, and he said, Steve, if you want to play partisan politics, go somewhere else. Valley first. And that's what we're gonna remember around here. San Joaquin County first. We're gonna fight like hell for everybody. So, thank you.
We will now proceed to the swearing in of elected officials. The elected officials who will be sworn in today are Steve J. Bestelarides, Assessor Recorder County Clerk, Jeffrey Woltcamp, Auditor Controller, and Fonse Calcom, Treasurer, Tax Collector. I would like to ask Mr. Bestelarides and his wife, Doreen Bestelarides, to proceed to the front of the dais to administer the oath.
Hello. First, I'd like to say that I'm very proud to have been your wife for the last 36 years. This will also serve as a renewal of our vows. I'm very proud of you. I'm very inspired by your, your work as a public servant for many, many years, and I'm really proud to have been at your side and, and behind you to support you. So can you raise your right hand? I, state your name.
And I called Congressman Pombbo and I said, "I want you to talk me out of something." And he heard some of the things that I was concerned about and said, "No, this is absolutely what you need to do." So I appreciate your encouragement. Final note, for those of you who know me, know I love to tell stories. So I'll keep this one real short, I swear, because usually they're 20-minute stories. And I think the Congressman probably remembers this story. I used to be very heavily involved in partisan politics, which is why I'm loving this position. Because I don't, you know, it's Valley first. But we were engaged in some political campaigns around the state. And I got back to Washington and I got in the elevator and then former Congressman Bob Matsui, who was the dean of the delegation, got in the elevator. And we were going up to the office. And the Congressman looks at me and says, "Steve, I want you to stay on the elevator for a second." And I'm thinking, "All my pride and glory, he knows who I am." And I'm thinking, "This is great." And everybody got off the elevator and the Congressman looked straight ahead, didn't look at me. And he said, "Steve, if you want to play partisan politics, go somewhere else. Valley first." And that's what we're gonna remember around here. San Joaquin County first. We're gonna fight like hell for everybody. So, thank you.
We will now proceed to the swearing-in of elected officials. The elected officials who will be sworn in today are Steve J. Bestelarides, Assessor Recorder County Clerk, Jeffrey Wolkamp, Auditor Controller, and Fonse Calcom, Treasurer, Tax Collector. I would like to ask Mr. Bestelarides and his wife, Doreen Bestelarides, to proceed to the front of the dais to administer the oath.
Hello. First, I'd like to say that I'm very proud to be your wife for the last 36 years. This will also serve as a renewal of our vows. I'm very proud of you. I'm very inspired by your work as a public servant for many, many years. And I'm really proud to have been at your side and behind you to support you. So can you raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Steve Bestelarides.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
It's always great when she upstages me and makes me emotional before I talk. I've had a blessed life to serve. I remember Doug Willhite called me when I had the pleasure of this day. And he told me, "You will be known as supervisor for the rest of your life." And I tell the new supervisors, "Congratulations. This is the greatest job you'll ever have in your life." And to Chairman Rickman, Vice Chairman Villapouda, to be Supervisor Patty, thank you for your devotion to the county. I have the second-best job in the county. You all have the first best and I wish you all success. That's it. Thank you very much and.
I would like to invite Register Hale to present Assessor Recorder County Clerk Bestelarides with his certificate of election. We now ask. We now ask Mr. Wolkamp and Honorable Adrian Van Houten to proceed to the front of the dais to administer the oath of office.
Jeff, thank you for this honor to swear you in. I appreciate it very much. In a condensation to old age. To get out my glasses here.
I might be borrowing to sign the oath.
Does I know, okay. So raise your right hand. I, Jeff Wolkamp.
I, Jeffrey Wolkamp.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution, I think we're saying this over again.
Of the State of, yes, California. That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Just a couple, a quick thank you. And to Paul and Steve. For those who remember back in August when I was appointed, I cried like a baby also. So, no shame, no shame. But I do, I do again, want to thank my family and friends, many who are here. I can't call you out specifically because I'll miss a few and then I'll hate myself for that. But, and my staff, always, who continue to make our office look great. Mr. Bestelarides, I can argue with you about the second-best job in the county, but we'll let that one slide. But a special thanks to two of my former bosses, former auditor controllers are here. Adrian, thank you for hiring me, taking a chance on me 15 years ago when I had, and I admittedly said to you, "I have zero governmental accounting experience." Are you sure? He went with me. Jay, I want to thank you for stepping aside and letting me be and letting me kind of run free. I appreciated that, always did. Thank you both for your leadership and your guidance. And we'll see where it goes from here.
And I would like to invite Register Hale to present Auditor Controller Wolkamp with his certificate of election. And I'd like to invite Treasurer Tax Collector Fonse Calcom for the oath of office.
And I won't argue about the best job, but I will let the crowd know, if you don't know, that the Treasurer Tax Collector was one of the first public servants in our civilization. And the municipal clerk was the second, oldest public servant. First, you got your taxes and then we regulated how it was done. Fonse. I state your name.
I, Fonse Calcom.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
First, I'd like to congratulate all the newly-elected county officials and also congratulate the two elected officials that were re-elected today. There's just a lot of people to thank. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the 74,169 voters that voted for me. So I really appreciate it, this county. I'd also like to thank Manuel Lopez and Rosa Lee, who are our former county supervisors, not, sorry, former county administrators that gave me an opportunity with the county. Also like to thank a former Treasurer Tax Collector, Shabir Khan, for giving me an opportunity to be his assistant. I also like to thank Miguel Villapouda for being one of the first supporters that I had. So I really appreciate that. Just so many thanks, but again, I couldn't do it without our team downstairs over the last 10 years. I think I assembled a really great team of individuals. They're not only, I think, the best county employees, but they're also really, really good people. I'd like to thank my family, friends, and all the colleagues that were here. I appreciate you all. I'd like to thank my parents, and I'm pretty grateful that I still have all four of them. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my wife, Diane Calcom, for giving me three awesome children, Alexander, Amethyst, and Alistair. Hope they all go to West Point and come back and serve our community here. So, thank you guys very much and thank you guys for coming in and sharing this special day with us. Thank you.
Vice Chair Rickman, that concludes this. Tony.
All right, thank you, Rochelle, and congratulations to you all. And we're gonna move on to item number seven, public comments. So anybody from the public wishing to address the board, you know, please come up and wish. It's like the first ever, nobody wants to come up. All right, seeing no one, move on to item number eight, election of officers. And we're gonna call for, I'll call for a motion and a second for the nomination of chairman and vice chairman. We'll go ahead and do chair first and then we'll follow with a motion for vice chair.
Vice Chair Rickman, it is my honor to nominate, make a motion, for our current vice chair to become our chairman, San Joaquin County for 2023, '24. Till '24.
Chairman, I would like to second the motion.
All right, thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Supervisor Villa Pouda?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty?
Yes.
Supervisor Ding?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rickman?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And I'll entertain a motion for the vice chair.
Chairman Rickman, I'd like to nominate District One Representative Miguel Villa Pouda to serve as vice chairman in this upcoming year.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank God.
Get a roll call, please.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Supervisor Villa Pouda?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty?
Yes.
Supervisor Ding?
Yes.
Chairman Rickman?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number nine. This is just a quick housekeeping item that we have to do before we jump to remarks from myself and the board. So if you just bear with us. Item number nine, the ratification of a local emergency proclamation. Counselor, can you take it from here, please?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first order of business for you and this new board today is a request from the Department of General Services, the Office of Emergency Services, to take something out of order. Typically, the board cannot discuss or act on any items that are not on the agenda, as this one is. However, there are a couple of exceptions to the rule. In this case, that exception is the need for immediate action on an item that arose after the posting of the agenda. After this agenda was posted on January 1st, the Directors of Emergency Services, that is the chairman of the board and the CEO, working in conjunction with the OES department and in accordance with local ordinance and state law, proclaimed a local emergency related to the ongoing severe weather conditions and flooding issues. In order for that proclamation to remain in effect, the proclamation must be ratified by this board within seven days. Hence, the need for immediate action, as your first regular meeting is not until January 10th. In order for the board to act on the proclamation today, two steps must be taken by motion. First, the board must find by a two-thirds vote that there is a need for immediate action on the proclamation and that that need arose after the agenda was posted. Secondly, assuming that there is approval by the board, two-thirds vote, the board may then consider, discuss, and potentially vote upon the proposed ratification and continuation of the local emergency. The Department of General Services and Office of Emergency Services, represented by the Director, Marcia Cunningham, and the Director of Emergency Operations, Tiffany Hayer, are both here to answer any questions should you have them in the substantive nature.
All right, thank you, Counselor. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for finding a need for immediate action on the local emergency proclamation that came to the county's attention after posting the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? Okay, we'll open up to public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to comment on this item? And none, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Supervisor Villa Pouda?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty?
Yes.
Supervisor Ding?
Yes.
Chairman Rickman?
Yes. And we'll take another action, ratify a local emergency proclamation. I'll entertain a motion to ratify and continue the local flood emergency as proclaimed by the Directors of Emergency Services on January 1st, 2023.
Make a motion to approve. Seconded.
And any discussion from the board? And none, open up for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to comment? And none, bring it back to the board and can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Supervisor Villa Pouda?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty?
Yes.
Supervisor Ding?
Yes.
Chairman Rickman?
Yes. I think that was like one of the fastest ever.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
Great, so thank you. Thank you, Counselor. And we'll move to item number 10 and come in chairman remarks, which would be me now, so thank you. And we'll hear from the board after that. And first of all, I just want to thank everybody that has, you know, took their time out, braved this crazy weather to be here with us in the chambers. And for those who are watching remotely, that tuned in to show your support, you know, for Supervisor Paul Canepa. And what I understand, I mean, I was busy in the back, but I was told that you had a bunch of coupons for free car washes. I don't know how true that is, but, you know, we all have time to hit them up after this.
Good thing that's against the law.
And Supervisor Steve Ding, congratulations to you. And I know you watch these meetings and, you know, in the past, how long that they go. And, you know, so it's great to have somebody who owns a restaurant that, you know, during the tough times, we can go over there and have some food and maybe it's something a little stronger. So. And congratulations to our Assessor Recorder, County Clerk Steve Bestelarides, our Auditor Controller, Jeff Wolkamp, and our Treasurer Tax Collector, Fonse. And, you know, it's funny, because looking at his name, it's like, my God, how am I gonna pronounce this guy's name? But, Calcom, great, so congratulations to you all. And I also want to say, congratulations to Sheriff Withrow. I know I saw him earlier in the back there. He had his, there he is, he's swearing in yesterday. Our new DA, Ron Tredus, he had his swearing in yesterday. And our Carlos Villa Pouda, who's sitting in the back there on his reelection for State Assembly. So congratulations to you all. And I just want to, you know, recognize a few of our elected folks that are here today. I know we already introduced our past Congressman, Richard Pombbo. And, you know, we heard about Stag High, but, you know, we have a Tracy High alumni, so go Bulldogs! And if I remember correctly, we used to, God, we used to whip Stag something fierce back in the day. Our former Supervisor Doug Willhite. Our Manteca City Council, David Reichenberger. God, that name is the longest ever. Manteca had a great year. Our Stockton City Council member, Michael Blower, that's sitting in the front row. Of course, you know, Kevin Lincoln, you know, one thing about our mayor of Stockton, Kevin Lincoln, the nicest guy. I've talked to him a few times and, you know, on some important items and his, he's the smoothest guy, he just always stays same tone. And I appreciate, you know, all of you for being here and for, you know, working with us. I would also like to say thank you to my colleagues for your trust and confidence in giving me this opportunity for being the chairman of this board. I am, you know, deeply humbled and honored to have your trust and confidence, so thank you. Also, especially want to thank my wife, Karen, who's sitting in the front row or third row back there. And I know you're thinking, "God, how did he get her? Is she so pretty?" And then you look at this guy. But I don't know what it is. But, so thank you very much. And for my daughters who are watching remotely, you know, I want to thank you for standing beside me and sharing me with the residents of San Joaquin County. You know, without your commitment, and I can say this, I think, for all of us, without our spouse and family's commitment, support, patience, and understanding, none of us would be here today. And last but not least, my Chief of Staff, Scott Tyrell, where is he? There he is, in the very back. And if anyone can, up here, that can tell you that we wouldn't be nearly as effective or responsive without our Chief of Staff. And Scott is my right-hand man. And I just want to say thank you for all your hard work for the last two years and answering my phone calls and during the, you know, all hours of the night. Because it's funny, I'll text him or, you know, send him an email like 4:00 in the morning. I just wake up, I have a thought in my head and he responds. I'm like, and I call, talk to him the next day, hey. I'm like, and I call, talk to him the next day, hey, man, I apologize, I didn't expect you to, you know, respond so quickly, but that's the kind of guy he is. So thank you very much, Scott. Now, today is the first day that I have the privilege of serving as your chairman. My goal is simple, to work my colleagues and to accomplish great things for San Joaquin County. Going the weeks and months to come, I look forward to working together with our board members, our cities, our staff, and most importantly, you, the residents of San Joaquin County, to create a great future for us all. As I have said many times in the past, together, you know, we can make it happen. You know, my agenda is based on simple principles of making San Joaquin County a safer and more desirable place to live and work. Now, I look forward to working with you all up here on several important items that will make San Joaquin County prosper well into the future. You know, these include, you know, public safety. You know, the first priority of government is to make sure we keep our residents safe. You know, for me, for over 25 years, you know, I have worked and currently work as a state police sergeant and, you know, I've worked in every area here in San Joaquin County. So I have devoted my life to public safety, and so it's something that is very, very important to me. You know, we will continue to ensure that our county public safety departments and fire departments have the resource that they need to keep our residents safe as well as themselves, ensure that our county public safety are properly compensated, and ensure that county public safety departments are properly staffed. Agriculture and water. Agriculture is the heart and soul of the valley, and you can't grow our economy without water. Now, we will continue to provide proper support to ensure Ag's continued prominent role in our economy, protect the right to farm ordinance, fight for the restoration of the Williamson Act funding, and protect our water rights to ensure farming remains viable, and also fight that ridiculous tunnel with everything that we have. As for our veterans, you know, we owe a debt of gratitude and respect for those who have served and sacrificed. We must continue to advocate for our veteran services, ensure that the French Camp VA facility is completed on time, and continue pursuing the relocation of the Veteran Service Office to a more accessible location. And of course, homelessness. You know, we continue to look for and push for cost-effective solutions, remedies to reduce homelessness in our, in our county. Now, that requires not only viewing this issue as one of housing. That's only one component of the overall issue. People are experiencing homelessness for a variety of reasons, including substance abuse problems, and those who have serious mental health issues and lack available resources. We have prioritized not just housing, but more behavioral and mental health services that will address the root causes of the many of the challenges currently facing our communities. In addition to securing funding for city shelter projects for Tracy, Manteca, Lodi, and we're currently working with Stockton, the county has been very proactive in its efforts to provide behavioral health services, and we will continue to do so. Transportation. The congestion that we see on our roadways and freeways affects your quality of life with your families, your health, and the economy. That is why it's so important to invest in our infrastructure to reduce traffic congestion and commute times. We need to continue to advocate for projects to improve commuters and provide options for commuters. That means, you know, highway and freeway improvements. You know, the 12099 interchange, for example, Phase 1A is starting spring of this year. The I-205 widening, the environmental analyst or analyst has been funded. Support for the San Joaquins expands ACE train services, expand public transit opportunities, expand the port of Stockton and the Stockton Airport, and continue to push for the Valley Link light rail. For economy and jobs, you know, we must give businesses and people the freedom and incentives to unleash the drive and entrepreneurial genius that are the core of progress. When we do that, you know, we all benefit. Continue to support programs that bring head of household jobs to our county, reducing the number of residents that need to commute over that hill, thereby improving their quality of life, reduce the cost of living, and also, you know, we must also remember that we cannot tax our way into prosperity, our parks and wrecks, and we must continue to invest in our community like we have done with our community centers and parks like Mickey Grove, and looking at developing the South County Regional Park. And lastly, our emergency responses, our natural disasters, our pandemics, and local emergencies, like you heard or that we talked about today, ensure full support of departments and our cities fully engage in response to these emergencies, and working with CSAC and California League of Cities, and develop a plan to promote local control of response and our local economy when appropriate to do so. Now, there will always be challenges that we face as a rapidly grown county. Some of these challenges we have already overcome. As we continue to progress forward, we must do so with determination and perseverance. You know, the nameplate in front of me may have my name on it, but it belongs to you, the residents of San Joaquin County. I am forever grateful for this honor to serve, and I will not forget where I came from or for whom I work for. So thank you all, and may God bless you and San Joaquin County. And I'm going to turn it over to our board members. Anybody would like to comment? Supervisor or Vice Chair, excuse me.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to everybody who got elected today, Jeff, Steve, Fonse, you guys have done a great job for San Joaquin County, and I know you continue to do the same thing. Congratulations to our DA, Ron Freitas, and our Sheriff, Pat Withrow. Yesterday was a fun event. It was nice to see you guys get sworn in. It was a beautiful day. To Paul and Steve, I know both of you very well. You guys are extremely hard workers. You're passionate about your districts. You're passionate about San Joaquin County, and I look forward to working with you guys. And as you said earlier, Tom and I have been here six years and can't wait to help you in any way we can. And we're here for you, and we're always going to support you. To our new chairman, very pleased and honored to be your vice chair. And yesterday you told me, Miguel, I want my coffee at 9:00 AM, nice and hot and ready, and I said, I can't do it. He gave me a list, he gave me a laundry list of things that I had to do for him, and I said, I can't do it. But no, I'm looking forward to an incredible 2023, and I thank you all for showing up today and supporting our amazing staff. Thank you.
You, Vice Chair. Supervisor Patty?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, we had some comments from our newly-elected supervisors, and we talked about chapters in life, and Supervisor Ding talks about a legacy, and, you know, you segue through San Joaquin County, and outside one of our hallways, there's a list from 1855 forward to present names of people that serve in this county. And there are names of historical relevance. There's the Will Hoyt family on that founding of San Joaquin County, and a legacy that carried on through, as I often refer to as the chairman, Mr. Doug Will Hoyt, and the many contributions, variety, and the variations of this county, and those that participate and make a difference. There's many eyes at this moment looking back up at us five and those that are serving this county, but we look back, we see all of you, and we realize that, and every day, we realize the importance of our lives and our responsibility, each and every one of you. We've got people that are business leaders, we have farmers here, we have people from public safety, from law enforcement, our deputies, our sheriff, our district attorney, we've got fire department representatives, we've got parents, we've got business leaders, as I mentioned, we've got community volunteers, we have people in this room right now that make a profound impact every day on this county and those that live here. I was recently down in Los Angeles, I was chatting with somebody, and their job was, they were an agent for an influencer, influencers, as we know, you know, social media, the influencers, you hear about them all the time, making tons of money. And I just thought for a moment, these influencers, what do they do? They promote something for themselves for their own financial benefit. But I truly believe that all of you and beyond these walls, you are the influencers. We have a privilege of working with you and for you. I truly believe my job, my responsibility, is to be a facilitator, a facilitator of success, of opportunity. How do we make a difference? How do we move forward? How do we face some of the challenges, some of which are unexpected like COVID, and some of the challenges that are, the impacts that that may have? Sometimes we get it right, sometimes not, but we're always going to be attentive, we're always going to listen, we're always going to be responsive. San Joaquin County will have many chapters in the past that will be storied and talked about, and there'll be chapters you have to be written in, there will be a future. We have chapters at times that perhaps were dark. There was a lot of divisiveness in history, and there's also many opportunities of how to make it better and how we can best serve the public. And I'm convinced that with the leaders we have in this room, from former supervisor Carlos Vipoudwa and now state assemblyman, so when you have leaders like that, you have examples like former congressman, Mr. Pombo, thank you, sir, for being here, with my friend from high school for many years, and I have to say, I remember my mother coming back from a rally when you were first running for office, she says, I met this young man, he's so dynamic, he's running for Congress, and I'm just going to get involved. I've never been involved with a campaign before, but he's going to be a great impact in this region, and you have been, and still to this day, because we're still involved. Each and every one of us here in this room can and will make a difference, and you do, whether it's, as our chairman mentioned, talking about some of the bigger challenges from homelessness, or just serving this community in your own capacities to maximize the impact for a better tomorrow. We thank you, I thank you for the privilege of being here. As Supervisor Vice Chair Vipoudwa pointed out, we have two more years in our final stage of this election of our terms and beyond to make a positive impact and to partner up with each and every one of you. So we look forward to this. We are open for business, we're open to engage, to be responsive, and to work with each and every one of you for solutions and pathways going forward. So thank you all for being here today, and also, by the way, I see our recently elected, and I believe sworn in, Gary Singh, mayor of Manteca. I think you may have come in late, did we wake you to come into our meeting today? All right, well, glad you could make it in before noon, so thank you, sir. But congratulations on mayor of Manteca, and this county, and each and every one of us represent every corner of this county. We are available, and we're looking forward to working with all of you. So thank you all for being here. We respect, value, and appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Patty. Supervisor Ding, want to say a few words?
Thank you. I will wake up in the morning and I will pray to God for guidance. We will be kind, but fierce in the protection of San Joaquin County. One of the things I learned working for Chairman Richard Pombo is, is nothing is accomplished with one man or one woman, it's a team, it's a strong team, and it's building coalitions. When he was the congressman here and we had, you know, Dennis Cordoza down south, and Matt Suya and Fazio up north, you know, the things like the Rough and Ready Island, airport runway expansion, Archsbury Road, the Lodi parking garage, those were all things that were done in collaboration, not just here locally, but with other elected officials around the state, and I'm looking forward to being a part of that. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Supervisor Canepa?
Um, yes, it's, it was interesting, the transition. So I got cut off from the city on Saturday, and fellow council member Christina Fugazi called me and said, Paul, we got cut off. Well, I wasn't, I just got my county email yesterday, so I want to thank you, Jay, for making the transition, and Rochelle for making the transition to the county and getting me started. So now I have a new email. But it's interesting how it's the life experiences that we live. So there's folks that are in the community and are advocates, and Tracy Glaze is one of them, and I don't know if Tracy is here today. So she called me about the flooding, the neighbor was across the street, and so she's saying, well, the county has places to fill sandbags, but the city doesn't have places to fill sandbags. So send Harry email and try to figure it out. All the trees that have fallen over, and the street flooding was overwhelming. I mean, the infrastructure is not set up to handle that much rain in that short period of time. So Sherry sending me photographs, pictures of cars that were crushed and houses that were damaged. And, and so I think that is, as an elected, is what we're elected to do, is live those life experiences. My mother-in-law lives in assisted care living. It was New Year's Eve. I go home, my house is lit up like a Christmas tree, and across the street, they didn't have power. But through my mother-in-law, she's out in assisted care living, and she has oxygen and needs a plug. So it's my experiences, not only as an elected, but as just a human being living life, that all those folks who are over there, there's, it's a two-story place and it didn't have any power, so the people that are upstairs are stuck. They went two days without power, and the emergency lights went out, so it was dark, so my wife brought some of them flashlights for the staff. And, and so those are the things you do as human beings, and I think we are electeds, but we're conduits for the citizens, and how do we expedite things? So for me, it's, because my district is basically central Stockton, Harding Way to Eight Mile Road to I-5 to West Lane, and so I'm going to have a lot of overlap with city. So it's a blessing that I came from city services so that the communication can stay open and that we share those lines of communication with the mayor and the electeds that I have and know that are still there and my contacts with the city, because we're only as good as the folks that we represent. And so if you don't challenge us as electeds, then nothing gets done. So I'm here to say that I've got a lot to learn here at the county. I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be a transition because this is a new job, and I've washed cars my whole life, and usually have a towel to dry the cars, as people know, but I work very hard and I'm very passionate, so I look forward to that. The most important thing to me is the health of an organization, and we're only as good as the employees that also make us look good, because we don't run, you know, we set policy and procedure, we don't run the every day ins and outs of the county. So I look forward to learning all the different departments. I do want to congratulate the sheriff. It was a little chilly out there, it was a little warmer in here today, so congratulations. He, his term is for six years, I'm sorry. Oh, exactly, so, so it was a little chilly, and then district attorney, I don't know what the fancy thing for your swearing in was, it was, I've never heard that word before, so, but that, he's a little bougier, so, so I look forward to working with you, you know what I mean? I'm just a meat and potatoes kind of guy. So I want to thank, I see Rex DeHaut and Alan Sawyer, you know, and Dave and Atul, they've always stood by my side unconditionally, and a lot of my friends that are here from high school, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I, I look forward to serving you. I'm a public servant, I have been a servant for our business because that's what we do, and that's what I know. I was raised with those values, and I bring those values and ethics up here, and I hold those to a high degree. So I'm trustworthy, I'm honest, I want the county of San Joaquin to succeed. It was a bitter day leaving the city yesterday. I brought my clicker and my iPad, and my daughter had called me, and she said, Dad, are you excited? And I said, yeah, it's a little bittersweet today, so I'm handing my stuff in, so, but that journey and those, and those relationships that I have, I am proud of, and I will fight for, to keep, and, and fight for the county as well. And thank you for allowing me to. And thank you for allowing me to serve with you guys. All the pomp and circumstance, I'm not a real pomp and circumstance guy, but I understand that it is a position and it needs to be upheld with honor, which I will do, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. And I just want to recognize also Lodi City Councilmember Bregman in the House here also, so thanks, thank you. To move on to item number 11, our benediction by Deacon Riza, so if you would all please stand if you wish.
Father, as we've reached the end of this meeting, we give you thanks for all that has been discussed and for every accomplishment that we have witnessed today. We pray that our actions from this meeting will not be fruitless. We thank you for our first responders, they have risked their lives to safeguard us, especially this past weekend. So Lord, may you bless us, keep us, may your face shine on us and be gracious to us. Will you lift up your face towards us and give us peace?
Amen.
Thank you, Deacon. And that gives us our last item, our adjournment. So we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 at 9:00 AM.